Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Good afternoon. It is June 7th and we'll call the council meeting to order. First, we'll begin with the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is roll call, please.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Any public comments? Okay, no public comments. We'll go on to the consent agenda. Questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
No old business on a new business. Discussion on funding of the wastewater treatment project. Sean, your little discussion on that?
Sure. As we ended our last meeting, there was just a very, very brief discussion on what the council would like to see again regarding the use of TIF to cover a portion of the cost for the sewer rate, or excuse me, for the wastewater treatment plant construction. Just wanted to see if there is additional discussion regarding the use of TIF and/or what percentage of TIF would be used in the construction phase. The engineer is continuing to work on a sewer rate structure for us. He has information that we have requested that he look at it without using any additional TIF participation. And then 25% TIF participation. But if there are strong feelings one way or another, we can try to tighten that up so he's not running all those additional calculations.
When will we be seeing that sewer rates?
We hope to have that by the 21st of June.
And this is 49% increase with the using the TIF?
So, yeah. So what you have in front of you is a cost breakdown on what the net effect would be on your average residential user, based on 1,000 gallons used, 1,500 gallons, 5,900, and 10,800 gallons used. So on the left-hand side, if you're using TIF to cover half the cost for borrowing, you're looking at 49%. If you're going to be funding that through sewer revenues, revenue bond, rather, you're looking at a 97% increase. Now, this is just the cost on the debt. The engineering firm is running numbers on what it's going to cost to maintain the assets as well. So you're, in essence, you're looking at what could potentially be a 70% increase without the use of TIF. So, in other words, you could be 120%, 125% if you're not using TIF at all.
Well, and I guess-
His last information to the city, and again, they're still working on it, so again, things are, will be changing slightly. But if TIF was going to be used to cover 50% of the debt, they were still anticipating at least a 75% rate increase. That's with TIF covering 50% of the debt.
Well, and there's some philosophical things to consider here as to what... There's the philosophy that a utility ought to carry its own weight. I'm not sure that we're... I don't know. I guess we have to see the results of those numbers. But there's also the philosophy that says that it ought to pay its own way.
That's where I think those numbers would come in handy so we have a firmer grasp of what we're actually looking at.
Yeah.
But is there not also a philosophy that that's what TIF is for? This type of application?
Well, that might be. I'm just saying that that's a... That gets to be a matter of opinion, but...
Well, that's why we call them philosophies.
Yes.
It's not our best rule. But what is the average? I mean, are the bulk of the water... I mean, in terms of a customer, you've got four scenarios here. Where do they fall in terms of the majority of the citizens of Sheldon? In terms of water usage?
Majority are going to fall between the 5,900 and the 10,000 gallon range.
Okay, and this does not address commercial use?
No, no. This is just standard residential at this point.
I think we need to see that, too.
So, we did run some calcs on the... On some of our larger users. And we're sharing that with the-
As a percentage of total water usage, what's residential versus commercial?
I couldn't give you an exact number at this point.
I think we need more numbers.
Yeah.
To your question from the beginning, I think we need to go further with the study.
Yep. Well, it's still ongoing. I just-
Well, you said, "Do we have them continue to calculate, run the numbers?" I would say yes, myself.
Yeah, I think we need to have that study back and then be able to make a decision for the year. And then what percentage we want to use as TIF and...
These are monthly? Are these monthly numbers?
Yeah.
Yes. It's going to be a bite in the pocket, but there's not a lot we can do about it.
Our hands are tied.
Our hands are tied.
Again, it's an unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
It is. We have to do it. But that's, to me, that's where the TIF-
That's where part of the TIF I think we should use some of it for.
Yeah.
I see Pete's philosophy, too, where he was talking about.
Yeah, and I haven't made a... I'm not saying, I'm not promoting one thing or another, but there is a philosophy that says that a utility ought to pull its own weight. Otherwise, you're getting a distorted picture. But, yeah, that's something that... We don't have enough numbers to really get into it. And I think we need the commercial side of the thing, too.
Yep.
That, and maybe an answer to the question you asked of the ratio between commercial and residential usage.
I'd also like to see what effect it would have on our overall plan of development. We've got some projects that we're going to need more funding for.
More funding, TIF down the road, what our capacity is.
And I don't want to jeopardize that. You know, somehow we have to balance this thing.
Would it be possible, Ange, to run last month's bill with the new rates? I mean, for the city, the citywide? Without doing... I mean, I'm not asking you to do days and days of work, but could you just plug in a scenario where it's now this much for the water and this is how much income, this is the expenses for any given month, whatever that we have right now?
Or is that what that rate study will do?
At what rate? At what... And I guess at what participation? I'm not even sure if you... If it's feasible, but then-
Well, then, so you want to see it at...
I would like to know what current is and a 50% TIF funded, for example, or somewhere... I mean, we could slice and dice this a number of different ways. But if, similar to what you've done here, how, I mean, could we do that?
Last month, but you want the last month's numbers. So like-
Yes. This is what it was now. This is what it would be if we were at the new rate with the 40... With the 50% TIF subsidy. And this would be at full, full cost.
Sure you're going to want an average or just last month? Because that's going to vary throughout the year as well.
I would settle for a month, just so I know. I mean, we have something to compare to real-life scenario. But I don't know if you can do that without doing a whole lot of backing out of it and then...
I'm going to have to check with Pat. I really, I'm not sure. But we'll do our best to try and get you something that shows it.
Don't spend days and days on it. Don't spend hours and hours on it.
Okay.
Could you just pull somebody's...
I can pull numerous ones, you know, that just gives you a range of... Which is kind of... She just pulled four different residences, residential places, and used that gallon inch and then just to show you the difference on these.
We... There's national information out there to show what the average family uses, so...
Okay. So then this would be, this would be an average bill then?
Essentially, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Those are four actual residences in Sheldon. I don't know who they are.
But we don't have commercial. We don't know the...
Yeah, and I assume that-
We've got 1, 2, 3, 4, but there may be 80% in the 5,900 range, you know? So it's not... It's sort of helpful, but not...
I think the study's going to address some of that, Greg.
Okay.
Because they've taken into effect, there's numbers they're working with that are commercial usage versus residential usage. I also believe they're looking at the difference of, should the increases be different? I mean, that's information to come yet, so it's a little premature to talk about it much at this point.
Right. But when you say it's a 75% increase, I mean, that's just a number. That doesn't mean anything to anybody if in terms of how it's going to affect me or the city on a monthly basis, you know?
Take the sewer portion of your bill times 1.75.
Okay.
I mean, that... Your bill is broke down into water, sewer, and then feeds. If you do a 75%, you would look at the sewer portion of your bill and take it times 1.75 or 1.5 or...
Okay, but now, is that with a... And I'm just playing Joe Citizen here. Is that with the subsidy or no subsidy?
Well, that's interchangeable.
The TIF, with the TIF fund.
Oh, right here on-
It's all relative.
Yeah.
It's all relative to whatever decision you end up finally making.
Okay, here on 5,900, the increase is $15.56. If you go over to the 90%, then it's an increase of 2,861. So right there is your increase.
Right.
Your monthly increase.
If you're using 5,900.
If you're using 5,900 gallons.
End of the day, you've got Eximac coming in, Eximac going out. You've got to figure out how you're going to match those. And what revenue sources bank.
So we probably have the information, basically.
Well, you have in front of you, essentially. So you're looking at if, in today, in the upcoming... Once the ordinance for the water and sewer rates are read for the third time, you're going to show an increase of 8% on your water side. And then you're showing what that cost would be if you're using... If your sewer's going to go up by 50%, it's showing 49%. Or if it's going to go up roughly 100%, you've got 97%. If you want to know what 75% it is, it's in between those two numbers. So the data is there. We wanted to try to give you a good average. It does not have the commercial...
Well, I think we need to consider that ramification. I don't, you know, I don't know if residential is 80% of our total usage or 20% of our total usage. I don't have a clue. But I know historically that we've had some discussions about those commercial rates, and I think we need to look at that. And I assume that the sewer study would do the total picture, not just residential?
No, that's, it's the full round.
Any idea when that'll be available?
We targeted for the month of June to have that completed, so...
It's reasonable?
What is that going to re... We could target. Is that the reality? This is McClure that's doing it?
No. DGR?
Yep. So whether or not we'll have that by the 21st, that's our timeline, but I'm not sure if they'll meet that.
So we should have it July, then? Hopefully by the first meeting in July?
As soon as we receive the initial information, staff will review it, make sure that we're comfortable with that. And then we'll have that presented to the city council. So whether or not it'll be by the 21st of June, I'm not sure. Okay.
Any other discussion? Go on to the next item. Item number four, the 300... Or 200, $2,395,000 general obligation capital loan note series 2027. A resolution of appointing a paying agent, note register, transfer agent, and approving the pay agent and the note register and the transfer agent agreement and authorizing the execution of this agreement. Is the first item on the agenda. It's a lot of verbiage there.
Basically a formality for them to deposit the money.
It's formality to deposit the money and us to use it. So do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So move. Support.
Questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Okay, item number B. Resolution approving and authorizing a form of a loan agreement and authorizing and providing for the insurance and levying to tax to payable to note, approval of the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate.
So this is a resolution showing that the city council will levy a tax in order to cover the cost to repay the note?
The note. Another formality?
So move.
Another formality.
Support.
Discussion, comments? Roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Okay, number five. Consider the first reading of the ordinance on fireworks. And everybody has a copy before them. Talks about the fireworks. Did you want to discuss it, Mike?
Yeah, if you can give me just a few minutes, I want to highlight a few things in it, give opportunity for questions, tell you what it includes and does not include.
Okay.
So the proposed ordinance would amend 41.11, which is the current ordinance, and it covers consumer fireworks, display fireworks, and novelties. Your consumer fireworks are really the ones that the biggest change would be to. Those are various types of fireworks like firecrackers, bottle rockets, Roman candles, missile-type rockets, et cetera. Your display fireworks would be what you'd expect to see at the village's annual event. And then novelties are things like party poppers, snappers, things like that. With consumer fireworks, this governs the possession, use, and explosion and sale to a certain extent. And you'll see that it limits the use and explosion of consumer fireworks to June 20 through July 5, and then December 17 through January 2. That was the direction given by council at our last meeting. That is a narrower window than the state code, but you have that authority to make that less time. And that's what this would do. The maximum would be June 1 through July 8 and December 10 through January 3. It also designates certain times. Basically, it'd be between the hours of 12 and 10. That is also more restrictive than the Iowa code. The Iowa code would allow earlier times in the day. But this limits it to 12 to 10, except on July 4, which is extended to 11:00 PM. And then January 1, it's extended to 12:30 AM. Questions about those dates and time limitations? I believe that's consistent with the instruction given at the past council meeting.
Yep.
Okay. It also limits the places where you can use consumer fireworks. It's limited to your own property or property that someone has consented to the use of the consumer fireworks at. In other words, no public property could be used to explode or otherwise use consumer fireworks. I would note that in some of the ordinances that are being considered and adopted around the state, some communities have put use restrictions, such as, for example, not closer than 200 yards to a hospital. There isn't that type of restriction in this ordinance. But I'm just noting for your information that some communities have included distance restrictions. In other words, even if you're on your own private property, if it falls within that range, they're not allowing the use. This does not have any such restriction. You have to be 18 to use commercial fireworks or, if you're under 18, under the direct supervision of a parent or guardian. I would note that under the newly issued regulations, persons under 18 can sell fireworks under the supervision of their employer. But otherwise, you cannot sell consumer fireworks to persons under 18. Questions about how that works out?
So a 16-year-old can sell them, but he can't buy them?
Can't sell unless under the supervision of the employer. But they can in that context.
So they can sell, but they cannot buy them?
Cannot buy and cannot sell it to them. But if you are going to set up a fireworks shop and had a 17-year-old that was...
Working for you.
Working for you, potentially, you could use them.
But that's more on the selling side of it, not on the use side for us.
But by this ordinance, you would be making a decision to prohibit the use by anyone under 18 years of age unless properly supervised, directly supervised by a parent or guardian. The logic of that is if an 17-year-old can't buy them, then why would you let them use them?
Shoot them by themselves.
Unsupervised.
Correct.
Okay, and the state code sets that purchasing age?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a provision in here that would prohibit possession, use, or explosion of consumer fireworks while appearing or determined to be under the influence of alcohol and/or controlled substances. I would note that the state regulations also prohibit selling fireworks to persons who are obviously under the influence. So there's some continuity between this suggestion here and the state regulations. And then just a common sense provision that you can't do it in a reckless manner or a manner likely to cause death, injury, or property damage. That has to do with the use of consumer fireworks. Any questions about those provisions? As far as the sale, that's governed largely by Iowa code and the administrative rules that they very recently put out. So the city would defer to those rules. If you're going to sell in the city of Sheldon, you have to show under this ordinance that you have a proper permit and that you have proper insurance. And that insurance requirement also comes from state law. We have what's called a peddler's ordinance, Chapter 122, in our Code of Ordinances. If you would fall within the definition of a transient merchant, you also have to meet the requirements of Chapter 122 in order to sell consumer fireworks. And then there's a posting requirement that would say, if you're selling, you've got your proper permits, et cetera, you have to have some type of display that there's regulations within the city about when, where you can use the fireworks that you're buying. So that covers consumer fireworks. Display fireworks, the provision there is basically the same as the city has had for many years. At the suggestion of our insurance agent, we increase the amounts of liability insurance that you'd need to carry if you're going to get a display fireworks permit. And other than the village, I don't think we've had very many people ask for display fireworks permits.
No. That one year where I was asked.
Novelties, those are those party poppers and other things. This doesn't prohibit sale, possession, use, explosion of those type of things in any way. So those would be covered, if at all, by state law. And then if... The proposal here is that if you violate this ordinance, it would be a simple misdemeanor with a fine of $250. The state code for its various provisions requires a fine of not less than $250. So you'd be consistent with that. If you wanted, and we'd have to change this, but if you wanted, you could increase that fine all the way up to $625. But in order to be consistent with Iowa code, we don't have a simple misdemeanor violation here that would be punishable by jail time. Simply a fine. We needed to pick a number to plug in, so we picked the lowest number allowed by state code. Again, that's first reading, so that can be changed.
Can be changed.
And this would be effective... The earliest this can be effective is after proper passage and then publication, so...
And how much time on publication?
On a Wednesday meeting, and we get it to the paper on Thursday morning and be published on Saturday.
Three readings are required, of course. We're here for the first reading. Readings can be waived by a vote of three-fourths of the council. So that's an overview of what we put together.
Okay. Any discussion amongst the council? Okay with dates, times?
I think it's reasonable. You know, we've made some adjustments.
Has anybody seen any licenses or permits come in from vendors wanting to sell in town yet that have been approved by the fire marshal?
We have not had any submitted to the city yet. There are a number of people very interested in receiving those so they can move forward.
I know of one that's buying stuff to start one. So he said he filed his paperwork on Monday. So that's all I know of.
Do we still know? So, and there, Micah mentioned, talking about limitations on location where you could shoot fireworks, say, no public property, or some communities talked about, no closer to buildings such as hospitals, et cetera. Are there any limitations on where they can sell?
It has to be... They can be sold in a commercial setting, so zone commercial. They have to, if it's a temporary location, they have to fill out a temporary use permit.
Now here, the fire marshal's office is pretty enforcive on their buildings and that kind of stuff. They won't let just any building. Then one individual wanted to use one building in town here and told him that he could not use it.
We have a no burn, no open burning policy, correct, for leaves and whatnot? Is that right?
Yes.
Do we have one on fire pits and such?
That would be recreational fire.
In cases of drought or dry conditions, do we limit that? And I'm thinking in terms of this now, would we limit use of fireworks in drought conditions?
You could issue a burning ban.
That includes use of fireworks.
Okay.
Because I know several years ago, they issued a burning ban.
We didn't. I believe the county did.
The county wide did.
And then we spoke of it and asked people to conform to it, if I remember correctly.
Yes. Yes.
This would not, I mean, if we issue a burning ban, that trumps this ordinance?
I haven't researched that particular issue, but I believe that you could issue something that suspends the use of fireworks.
Okay. That's one of the concerns that I have, I guess. And then the other, I think is going to be difficult to afford is persons under 18. I think in the 16-year-olds, they've got a license, but they can't, they aren't going to be able to do fireworks. That's going to be a, from law enforcement is going to be, they're, they're going to do it. So are we going to enforce it or not? Yeah, we say we're going to put teeth in this, but 18-year-old and fireworks seems to be a little old. I think we could back that down to 16 or 14. I don't know what's realistic, we could argue that the rest of the day, probably.
Like Micah said, legally, they can't buy them without a parent, as per state code, unless you're 18.
But I think back to my teenage, or my younger days, and I was, your parents were buying the fireworks, but I was much younger than 18 when I was shooting them off.
Again, as long as your parents with you.
Yeah, but they weren't. You've got a 16-year-old, they can drive a car, they're going to hang out with their friends, and fireworks can be, can be used, I don't, but.
I see what you're saying.
I, I guess my, my argument would be that at age 16, you can drive a car, but there's lots of other things you can't yet do.
Correct.
So I, you know, when does the age of maturity come, I guess, I don't know. I, I wish it was as simple as a number, right, Micah?
That's what I was going to say.
So that's all, they'll do two, two thoughts that cross my mind as we're working through this here.
Does the state address that age other than purchasing?
It only, well, it addresses it in two contexts, I think. One is, you can't, the statute talks about selling to those under 18 and an under 18-year-old trying to purchase in that context. And then the regulations address the age in the, in the sense of employer, employee. It does not address it in terms of use. There's no, there's no specific pronouncement on use.
So they threw that monkey on our back, okay.
When putting our ordinance together, I know Sean, you had mentioned looking at several other community ones.
I've seen the age of 18 used in all of them.
Yeah, this was a combination of your feedback, our own independent work, and then I think I reviewed three other ordinances. For sure, two of them, well, of the three, one was an all, all-out ban, so under 18 was irrelevant. And the other two both said not under 18 without direct supervision.
Any other discussion? Where do we want to go with it? Leave it as is, change anything?
I'm fine with it as is.
I'm comfortable with it.
So do we need any kind of action?
We'll have to do, consider the first reading if we want to approve it. And.
Set for a second reading?
First, second, or however we want to proceed with it.
We'll make the motion to move it to the second reading.
Support.
Discussion, roll call, please?
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye. And number six item on agenda, considering the second reading of the water wastewater rate ordinance, 8% increase. I'd make the motion to approve that to the third reading.
Support.
Discussion, roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Number seven on the agenda, regional airport snow removal equipment. A, setting time and date for bid lighting, and I believe that's June 21 at 9, at 10:00 AM. So we need a motion to set that.
So move.
Second. Roll call, please?
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye. And B is setting time and date for public hearing on that bid lighting, or just public hearing, I should say, June 21 at 4:30 PM.
So move.
Support.
Roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Comments, Todd, Lyle?
I'm sure you guys probably all seen it already on, on media, but Officer Degui got his 30 years of service with our department, so if you see him, congratulate him.
On behalf of the mayor and council, I would congratulate him and thank him for his 30 years of service. Zach?
No.
Greg?
No.
Micah? Sean?
I've got a save the date for council members. It would be the, the goal-setting session that is set for November 21. It would be at the same time that they've, they've held goal sessions in the past, which is, I believe that it's about 11 o'clock, it goes through the lunch, lunch hour, lunch will be provided. So I'll give you a little more information as we, we set the exact times, but it is slated for November 21. I believe that is a Tuesday. The marketing committee is interested in adding additional refuse containers to the downtown area. There, there are certain intersections that are lacking those containers. Any issues with, with that? The cost would be borne by the marketing committee, so.
Go for it.
Okay. And there's also an interest in maybe adding a tree to the, the mayor's park, the planting area in the, in the parking lot. They wanted to bring that forward, so I just wanted to put that out. So we're able to consider, consider that at a later date. Apparently, there was a large tree there for a number of years, it was removed a number of years ago. But there's an interest in putting something back there, so. Just wanted to make sure I, I shared that.
Check.
So.
Todd have a comment about that? Okay.
Todd loves trees.
Pete?
Nope.
Angage? Okay, I have nothing. Have we entertained the motion to adjourn?
So move.
Support.
Roll call, please?
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Thank you, have a good afternoon.